The second agenda item is consideration of the Lansing Roundtable Gun Club's right-hand approval to relocate that field shooting range. And there's a number of people here to partake in this discussion. And we're going to open a public hearing. I just, I want to kind of get a schedule for tonight. I would like to, number one, hear a proposal. Do we have a representative here to give us a quick synopsis proposal?
Sure.
Okay, not yet, not yet. We're almost ready.
Well, we've considered this only, yeah, actually, since we made these changes already.
Okay, so we're going to get a short presentation. I think most everybody on the board is familiar with the hearing and stuff, so we don't have to be too complicated with it. I'm going to let this board have a whack at questions and observations first, and then I'm going to open a public hearing up. Maybe some of the questions that we asked the board will be answered from people from the public also. And then we'll open the public hearing up. We may or may not close it tonight, we may leave it open. This seems to be a rolling, bigger and bigger action. So our only action tonight will be taking the vote to declare ourselves lead agency in this review process, which means that we're going to handle all the review right there locally, and we're going to send out letters to concerned parties, and hopefully it'll all apply. We will be, we will be the lead agency even in regards to the town board. The town board in this situation has the ultimate say, and they will issue a special use permit.
Or not.
Or not, once we pass this to them with our recommendations after our review. But we will be the lead agency as far as speak for the state environmental quality review and site management conditions.
And complete options of the long form and our county should be sent over to concerned agencies, that's the EPA and the D E C.
Right. I know the county, the county is already weighed in on the planning department. They recently have much to say either day, so at this point, I guess I'll open the floor for the presentation.
Yes, good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman, the rest of the board. My name is Mike Porcello. I'm with the Los Angeles Park Department, and I represent the gun club. This, I got involved with the gun club because I do a lot of work in the outdoor industry and the, especially with the shooting sports. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the shooting sports and what EPA has done as far as the shooting sports. There's a big manual that's put around called best practices, and it's specifically for shooting sports. And the other thing that people don't really realize is that there's a thing called the Pippin-Robinson Act out there. Every, every gun, every piece of ammunition, every fishing equipment, 11% of that is an excise tax, and I bet you everybody doesn't know where that money goes. The D E C, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, all the, all the sporting and conservation organizations that are run by the states around the country, that's how they're funded. That's where the money comes from. It doesn't come from anywhere else. That's where it comes from. So this conservation organization, this gun club, it has been around since the 1950s. It's about 113 acres down in Lettleville. And, you know, I've been down there for a long time. I've fished the Salmon Creek for a long time. And there's about 150 members. They do a lot for the community. They do a lot for their neighbors in the area. And when the issue of shooting and lead deposition came up, what the top, what the, the club did is they immediately talked with the EPA about it. They voluntarily worked with the EPA, and, you know, that's what I do. I work with the EPA on a lot of different things, on a lot of different projects on behalf of a lot of individuals. So this particular area, as everyone knows, it's 113 acres, and Salmon Creek runs smack dab right through the middle of it. Well, the club has been there for a long time. No one really worried about a lot of things with, with shooting, things to that effect. And lo and behold, in about 2014, 2015, we began talking with the EPA. And we began talking about ways to eliminate the shooting that goes on into the creek and into the wetlands in the area. Originally, and we went through a whole thing with both the EPA, with this best practices, with a number of other things, and with some consultants. And the best thing that we could come up with was what they call a shooting screen, or a curtain that goes over the creek area that would stop the lead from going into the creek area. So that was the plan. That was what was going to take place. And then lo and behold, we had some bad flooding that occurred about a year, year and a half ago. So we went back to the EPA, and EPA originally wanted to try to figure out a way to reconfigure the, the shooting fields, you know, put it on the other side, shoot away from the creek. So we met with a bunch of people. We got surveyors out there. We tried to configure the shooting areas in a way that would be, that would mitigate the impact of shooting on anything. We also went through what's called a environmental stewardship plan. The environmental stewardship plan is something that also is endorsed by the EPA, and what almost all of the shooting sport gun clubs do now. Every five years or so, there's companies that will come out, and they reclaim the area, they recycle all the lead, and things like that. So we came up with a plan. We spoke to the town. We tried to figure out exactly how we could reconfigure the shooting fields so that it would shoot away from the, the Salmon Creek and be a win-win for everyone. And we did that. That's why we're here tonight. The, the area across the creek was a shooting, it's a rifle and handgun range. The, the plan is to reconfigure everything so that the shooting goes over, away from the creek, and it will be reclaimed in the area with the stewardship plan. That generally is it. It's been a gun club for a long time. It, we're really not changing the character use in the area, and we asked the planning board for recommendation to grant, recommendation for granting a special permit. Have any answer any questions?
We're sticking in board for, for a while here. Okay, Cal.
Can you talk about the bridge over Salmon Creek? Have you had approval from the D E C on that? And what kind of cost that might be?
I'm, I'm not sure about the bridge over there.
Yeah, at this point.
So have you, have you approached the D E C with, with that idea?
A hundred percent. We've talked about it with certain ones, but we haven't done anything as far as permitting.
So if, if this does come about on the other side of the creek, and you don't have the bridge, then you're going to have considerable foot traffic along Salmon Creek Road, as well as along the one-lane bridge to get to the shooting ranges that's planned right now, correct?
For, there, we're driving over Park, which you only have six cars in the case. That's all we need at one, at one point.
There's usually not that much, there's not that many people that are shooting or starting out shooting at one period, at one point in time. You're, you're talking about five stands of people, so you're, you don't have to have that many vehicles over there. But all of those things will be considered, and will be considered by the club before anything, any, you know, shovel is put in the ground for any kind of bridge or anything like that.
But I, I think, I think that bridge has got to be tied into the approval process. We don't, we don't want foot traffic on that road and along that bridge.
So you would like the bridge?
If that's the way you get the people off on Salmon Creek Road.
Then we'll, we'll explore it. There's, there's plenty of ways to put a bridge over a Class C stream. You know, we deal with it all the time, and, you know, we'll put that into the plan.
What happened when, when the flooding occurred a couple of years ago? What happened to, I mean, did all that lead that was just sitting around there go into the creek then?
There wasn't, but just sitting around.
Because you said you want to reclaim that every five years?
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't, it hasn't been reclaimed. Nothing is reclaimed. I mean, that's, that's, if, if you were at any of the prior hearings, the EPA comes in. The creek is one thing. There's, there's nothing that's deposited into the creek that you can find. There's waters and tested and everything else. It's the wetland area that is, was, was more of an issue of what do you do with it? And if you talk to Ed Guster, who has wrote the manual here, and at the EPA, EPA, you do more damage going into a wetland to try to reclaim it and take out what's in there than, than to do the reclamation.
Well, let's, with the plants on the water and the weather, the weather is probably the last thing that's going to be moved out by the water here. It's the, the density of the weather itself protects it from moving. But that was, that's, that's the whole idea.
Are there any other water tests available that shows above and below this upstream and downstream from this?
My, my understanding is, when they put the new bridge in just recently, they did a bunch of testing both above and below because they had to for the bridge construction. And my understanding is there was just background levels. So I don't have those tests.
I think we need to see them, though. Just for, you can get them through a break.
If I can get them, I mean, I think the state has them.
Try the state and county. The state would require the county to do it because the county was the agency that built the bridge. They both should have copies.
Yeah, I, I, I can try to get them. I don't have them. I know that's what I was told, that, you know, they had to do the testing, that it was background levels.
Well, I mean, you know, we're going to get that question here in the public hearing probably in about 10 minutes, but the fact is, as you said, there's no lead in this stream. Well, that's hard to believe, you know, there's got to be some lead in this stream. So a test above, a test, a result above, and a test result below is going to say, okay, it, maybe, maybe it's not substantial, but it would certainly be nice to see it. I mean, you, you can't stand here and tell me there's no lead in this stream. We never get to ask.
There's, there's lead in the dirt everywhere around here.
I understand.
Fifty years of internal combustion now, and one test, that's all lead, so no.
What, what, we, we, we talked, I mean, don't forget, we've been through a whole public hearing and the whole thing with the consent order with the EPA. And that's why we're, we've come here for the special permit, as opposed to, the environmental is pretty much already been done, you know, so you can ask Mel Behan and Ed Guster and the rest of the people at EPA, while we've already been through.
I think it's reasonable. We should be provided with that, and they have the answer.
Well, I do, too. I mean, it'd be nice to see some results, just so we have, we're applying wider.
So are there portions of the existing trap range and rifle range, handgun range that are outside of the wetland?
Yes.
Assuming there are, and have they ever been remediated?
They're, they're.
For lead?
The areas that are there existing, you don't have to remediate them while they're in, in existing. The record does not require remediation. It's a voluntary thing, and that's why we've done the environmental stewardship plan. And the club is committed to, we need all the approvals or the club's not going to be there anymore. So that's part of the environmental stewardship plan, and that was part of the consent order with the EPA, is to do all of these things, provided that, you know, we get approval as the EPA. And I would just note, and I know the board is aware, that the EPA did send a letter, you know, recommending the approval by the planning board of this particular issue.
So I see in the, in the stewardship plan that you plan to reclaim lead every five years, correct?
That's right.
So that, that would be from the time you start the trap range? And when would you plan to do reclamation on the existing areas?
There's no plans to do reclamation on the existing areas. As I noted, the, the areas, the existing areas aren't wetland, and the EPA's recommendation is not to do any kind of remediation there.
Okay, but you said that there are areas outside the wetland that you do not plan to remediate, correct?
The new range is going to be outside the wetlands. The old range exists totally. Totally, totally within a wetland, okay.
Then with the shot zone.
With the exception of your, that is a pistol and rifle.
The shot, yes. So there are portions that are not in the wetland, but the shot zone is in the wetland. That's the whole reason that we've done voluntary compliance and worked with the EPA on a voluntary advisory consent order. But to answer your question in a little bit more detail, the reason the five-year term is put in place is because there's not enough lead to get one of these reclaimers to come in every year. There's just not enough lead that's deposited. So, and, and with the, the soil chemistry in the areas, there's not really any kind of a chance of bleaching in such a short period of time. So five years is the, is the recommended term, the best management practice, or the recommended term where you come in, and these companies will come in, and they shut down, and they excavate down to a certain level, and they remove the lead and that type of thing.
For the, for the rifle range, you're going to be putting in bullet traps?
That's, yes, that's the plan.
Are there any details on yours?
I believe those are, are also contained in EPA's best management practices and the NRA manual.
So are you doing, as I understand, you're going to do curtains on the new range?
No, no, no curtains on the new range.
Really?
Yeah, they're showing the, they're showing the shot zone being out here.
So, so, or.
Just a safety zone.
You want to create another hazardous waste site across the creek?
Well, there's made hazardous waste site to begin with. That's the term garden, if you look at consent orders, there is no hazardous waste site.
How about the Ithaca Gun Club on Paul Creek?
What's that?
How about the Ithaca Gun Factory on Paul Creek?
Yeah, I knew you'd bring it up.
How about Flint, Michigan?
Yeah, how, how, how's Lettleville?
How about Dunn Eagles?
How about Lettleville? Let's talk, let's talk about the luck we've got here.
I can't believe that you, you can, okay.
So your, your direction is into the hillside. The hillside now is covered with trees. Will you be taking those trees down?
Some of those trees will be taken down in the area of the shot zone.
So as the shot goes into the hillside, how are you going to reclaim that? You're going to take part of the hillside away in five years?
Yes, that's what the, these, the reclamation companies do, is they come in, and they take it down, and they, they take it down to a certain level. I think it's too creepy because the lead's not going to go any deeper than that.
How do you stop the erosion after that?
Well, you've got, you've got, like, grasses, and the reclamation companies are also, they have to be approved by the EPA, and they have to enter a whole plan in order to do that. They can't just come in willy-nilly and just take it out.
So the installations of shock curtains, luminescence, deflected, you don't have to go through this?
Shock curtains, this is the alternative to shock curtains. Shock curtains, the cost of the shock curtain is about $60,000 dollars. If the town has any grants available to us to, to look at shock curtains, we're happy to look at them.
The direction of your, your planned trap is in, is in the direction of one-on-one Salmon Creek Road. So what have you done? It's, it's right, they're, they're right in, almost in, just on the outside of the path. How have you, have you dealt with the Rosie to receive this?
Hello? Wow.
I have not personally. And, you know, I know that the town has tried to reach out to some people in the area.
No, not, not me. I just got a letter last week.
So there's been no interaction with the gun club with you, even though they want to put the traps within, within a few feet of your houses, but no interaction?
It looks to me like I'm in a safety zone as it, when it spreads out to, to this point.
All right, three pro.
You can see your house.
Stick to the four questions here on this, we'll, we'll move over to the public here shortly.
So if there's a concern with pH, does that mean that the lead, the lead forms salts that are soluble, or that can be swept away in water?
Well, I'm not, I'm not a, a, a chemist here, but the, the, the conditions, and there's, there's been articles and things written on this. The conditions to allow lead to become soluble and salt and to go away takes years, and it has to be under a specific set of chemical instances. And it has to be in acidic soil, and it also has to be a wet acidic soil, and it has to be there for a long period of time.
So I see in the stewardship plan that you talk about the, the action plan and item C having no lead, or not using any lead, is kind of shot down in your plan for two reasons, or the plan, one of them being the Amateur Trap Shooting Association rules?
Yeah, you can't, there is no shooting with, with steel. The other thing is, is if you make steel.
I'm sorry, you're, you're saying that their rules do not allow for alternative shot?
Well, there's, there's rules, you can, the sanctioned shooters do not allow for, for steel shot. And.
Because, because the rules I read from the Amateur Trap Association official rules allow for steel shot or other shot, as long as it falls within the correct loading and, and guidelines for the right number of ounces and the right feet per second of leaks.
Well, I think you have to look at the rules in their entirety, if not just that small portion of it. Yes, anybody can go out and shoot steel shot, but number one, the distances and things that you, you, the, the, no one's going to compete because steel shot doesn't have the ballistics of lead. So that, you're not going to have anybody that's going to go out there and shoot, number one. Number two, the reclamation companies cannot differentiate, they won't reclaim an area if it's got both steel and lead in there because they don't have the capabilities to differentiate between the two of them.
Okay. If you read the, the EPA's list with determination, number 24, number 25, there's a couple of things that, that speak to this. Lead shotgun is not reclaimed or recycled, may be considered discarded and/or abandoned, and may be considered a solid waste, which may pass it through to hazardous waste, as those terms define in section blah, blah, blah. The next one says lead pellets fired from shotgun may break down into soluble lead compounds such as lead hydroxide and lead oxide, which may mitigate into the groundwater and/or surface water. This soluble lead poses a potential threat to human health and the environment to water contamination. And that's right in their, their, high to, to the gun club. Speaking about their, their concerns.
It's in the consent order.
Consent, correct. So they're, they're not really telling you it's not, it's not totally without problems.
I, I think you have to read the whole consent order, because that one.
I think he does read the whole consent.
I can, but I, he's too loud.
That's one, that's one portion of it.
You can't discount these, these statements.
No, I'm not discounting these statements. My point, my point is, yes, lead is listed for a reason. But if you look at the soil chemistry and the, and the time that it takes for lead to, to become soluble into that, that's why there's an environmental stewardship plan of every five years to reclaim.
Got any questions from the board?
What is, what is the cost differential between lead and steel? What estimates all over the place?
You know, it, it really depends on the quality of cartridge and things like that, but I would say that steel is probably a quarter, 25% more expensive than lead to purchase.
Depends on.
Depends on.
Depends on the bulk, depending on the manufacturer. And it depends on the size of the shot. If the number eight shot, you're looking at 75 to 100% more for a box of 25 shells.
So, yeah, business, business is quite important.
Is the shooting area going to be within 500 feet of the dwelling?
I, you, you've got the map right there. You can look at it better than I can.
Guy, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Will the homeowners have ability to contest? I mean, you can't just guard within 500 feet of an occupied dwelling. Is that where it is?
Yes.
So will the homeowners have the ability to contest any shooting if it's within 500 feet?
You're talking about honey, right?
That's right.
No, it's, it's any firearm, any firearm, any district.
If you're on your backyard and target shoot, you have to have an impression from the neighbors to go within 500 feet. So trust me, I know that.
The answer to that would generally be yes unless the activity that they're pursuing is a certain type of hunting activity, which wouldn't necessarily apply here because it's a ranch. So there are, there are some, there are some exceptions to the 500-foot rule, including, for example, if you leave the firearms right at issue by, bows, bows only have 150-foot rules. But this wouldn't normally be an activity that was in lawful pursuit of game, so it wouldn't fall into any of the other limited exemptions like certain types of bird-riding, where you're allowed to be within 500 feet if you're shooting over the open water and not towards the dwelling. You can be 50 feet, 100 feet away. So there are some exceptions to that rule. It's not absolutely, but I don't think they'd apply here, but I'd defer to the D E C.
So then, really, you would need approval from any homeowner within that 500 feet before you even really want to consider construction, no?
Well, a homeowner or other building that is normally occupied for work or other purposes.
Can I ask how far up the slope the, the lead would go? I've never, I've shot my trap off, but I've never done trap shooting. So I don't know how far up.
I would have to defer to someone, I mean, I shoot, but I would say that, you know, you're probably shooting number eight shot or number nine shot, which is very small BB, and doesn't hit ballistically, go as far as like a number two or a double I buck shot. So it's probably, I'd say it, it, the fall zone is in the, in the materials, but the fall zone's probably between 100 and 150 yards.
In the EPA, it's sort of 100, 104.
So that goes pretty far up the slope?
Oh, sure.
That if they're going to have to.
Not here, you're not going to work with the contractors.
Kind of, right.
Definitely with the contractors.
Oh, okay.
In a remediation process, you see they're going to come in and take out soil from the hillside and plan. How long, how long would that operation take?
You know, I, you'd have to, it varies by the company, and they try to do it during the summertime.
Average, best guess?
Oh, I'm going to say that probably, because I've seen it done before, probably a month, maybe 45 days.
So where does the, where does the club shoot? Does that, during that point in time?
The club wouldn't be shooting. Usually the, the clubs, they, they schedule the remediation at a time when there is no shooting threat.
Nobody.
Yeah.
And the open shoots will be postponed during that period.
So what, what kind of area are we talking, if you're talking half acre or acre, two acres?
It's in the materials, but, and I would have to defer to the remediation companies.
Yeah, looks like it. And in other words, it would need a swift. Right, so it can overheat.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's why I had a point from town, that they would be required to recover anything that they, they opened up because it would fall on their sweep.
Yeah. And, and just, as I.
Do you have D E C reclamation as well?
What's that?
Do you have to go to D E C for a reclamation?
No, it doesn't have to go to D E C for reclamation. And these companies that are out there are sanctioned or approved by the EPA as a preferred contractor. That's what they do, is that's exactly what they do. They know what they're doing. They go out there, they put up silk fences and things to that effect, so that nothing moves out of that area, and then they reclaim with, with grasses in the area. And that's the other nice thing, after the first time that they do the remediation, you're going to have more of a grassy area. So the first time that they come in is the hardest time for them. And in order to get these companies to come in, they basically get the lead that they take out. So in order to get them to come in, you've got to have a period of like five years, and you have to have enough shooting that goes on. So it's worked a while, too.
So clear this area for remediation, we probably get some agent orange to fly over there before we do it?
If you got it.
Yes, I think you're going to start. No, I can't.
Just a point of clarification. Late today, actually, just before the meeting, we got the letter from the EPA, which we distributed to the planning board members. In here, it does talk a little bit about that there was a flood, so their original reclamation plan is going to be buried a little bit. And again, they said that, you know, Mr. Porcello would speak a little bit about that tonight.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, basically, what, what happened was, originally, the shot curtains were going to go right where the, the, the shooting fields are now. They were going to stay right in the same place, and the shot curtains were going to go up, so that when the shot went out, it would be prevented from going into either the creek or the wetlands. But because of the flooding and the configuration that, that we had looked at, that really wasn't feasible. So we worked with the EPA in, to try to reconfigure the areas, which is what the EPA wanted to do at the very beginning, but we didn't think we could fit the, the fields in. We worked with them, we worked with, you know, a, a, a surveyor, and we ended up figuring out a way to do that, which is actually a win-win, because there will be no shot. which is actually a win-win because there will be no shot going into the wetlands and the creek anymore.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when I read the paperwork, it said that the biggest reason that the shot curtains would be used on the existing course is because the D E C objected to putting up the shot curtains and the floods.
Putting the structure for the shot curtains, yes.
So it's not the choice of the club that was removed from the table by the D E C?
Well, no, it wasn't totally removed by the D E C, but it was, you would have to get a permit to put the posts, the pilings in to put the curtains up. But the other thing is, is that the area where the posts were going to go in were changed by the flooding as well.
So really, it's just, you were only going to put a couple, two posts in the ground, but because they were in an area that had experienced flooding, that the D E C had a problem?
No, it wasn't, it was not only the D E C. The D E C had talked about it, but it wasn't, at least I'm not aware of the D E C coming in saying, you can't use shot curtains. What the issue that came in was the area where the flooding occurred had changed the area so much that it wasn't feasible to do it. Now, maybe the D E C was involved with it or not. I was, the D E C never told me about anything about that.
So did you seriously consider using steel shot?
No.
That seems to resolve on our end.
Given that the original plan, EPA is dated September 29th, 2016, and has a eighteen-month duration, which ends at the end of this month, I believe. Is that correct?
If you look at the D E C or the EPA letter, that's been extended.
Yeah, exactly. What period of time is?
One of the things that the EPA letter sent in, I can't be reading into the record if anyone else wants to. But basically. Basically, what the EPA letter says is that they asked this board to get the approval done so that this remediation can be done as quickly as possible.
More than two times, they can't have a sanctioned shoot with steel shot. It's the organization that sanctions the shoots and keeps the records. There's a few other times like this.
But there's, I mean, there's certainly other places specifically that have sanctioned shoots.
Yeah, they all use that shot too.
Right, but not.
I don't know, that's not my season rules. What's that? This is the Amateur Trap Association official rules.
There are a number of sets of rules.
Since it cannot, maybe these are not the right ones.
Ask for that information, find that out.
But to me, how are the use of lead, steel, business or the composite non-toxic shot material shot allowed?
It's allowed, but, you know, for a sanctioned shoot, like I said. There's different things, there's different sets of rules, and I'm not familiar with all of them. I'm a trap shooter, but I'm not a sanctioned trap shooter. I'm not good enough to do it, so.
Somebody could give us further information so that we have that, right?
Certainly.
So, Mr. Arpaolo, this initial EPA reply, 27 C. I'll repair. Respondent shall also submit the EPA to the EPA and acceptable environmental stewardship plan to demonstrate how the respondent will be, will, on an ongoing basis, manage and reclaim lead at all its shooting ranges. It totally ignores the existing range, and they're not talking about the ranges that they have now and the new ones they have, I mean.
Well, the environmental stewardship plan speaks for something, it's an elaborate plan that's.
No, I see.
And you also have to, you have to go back and you have to look at the whole reason for this. It's a statute called RECP, okay, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. And RECP does not require any kind of remediation, as you say, for an instance like this because, number one, like I said, lead normally in a situation like this, as long as it's ongoing, it's not abandoned. It's not considered abandoned, it's not considered a hazardous waste, I mean, it's not considered a hazardous waste. So what the club will do, if it can get back up on its feet, not having to pay consulting fees and legal fees, and gets the fields in the right place, is they will look at trying to do remediation. But the companies that come in, obviously, if there's another area out of the club, the reclamation companies are going to want to come in and clean it up because they're going to get more lead out of it. The club will do that and those types of things, and will consider those things in the future. And I think that's what the environmental stewardship plan says. But until we get to the point where, you know, the D E C or the EPA has signed off on this already, and we would be moving forward and still shooting in the area of the creek if it weren't for the flooding and if it weren't for the people that have gone out and surveyed the area and have looked at these additional areas, which, by the way, are existing shooting ranges, they're just rifle and handgun shooting.
Okay, cleanup of the existing ranges, then you're saying, is going to be on a voluntary basis? It's not mandated by the EPA?
It's not mandated by the EPA. In fact, the existing fall zone is, the EPA says they do not want me to clean it up because it's in a wetland and will do more damage to the wetland than going in and trying to find the shots that might be in there.
Okay, the board got any other questions?
Well, I think it's reasonable that they would go there and clean up the part that wasn't in the wetland, even though it may not be the primary area.
Something to consider.
I think that's, I mean, it's never going to be a perfect world, but I do think if we could limit what.
It might understand that, but that's one of the options in the left hole.
Yeah.
Okay, you down here at the board level? Okay, not the, let's just try to improve with it and try to move on. We're going to go public here. All in favor? Aye. You know, just try to call it, you know, in your time, if your hands are raised, I know, gentlemen in the back. Your name, please?
Steven Smith.
Steven Smith.
I want to address the.
You want, can you stand up so we can hear you?
Yes, I can. I want to address this man. It's my understanding that you're hired by the NRA. Am I confused with that, or who's paying you?
Well, I'm not a trap here, but no, I'm not hired by the NRA.
So they, you're a big Syracuse lawyer, environmental lawyer or something? They didn't go down and get Wally Leans in Africa, they got a big Syracuse lawyer, right?
Thank you for the compliment.
So instead of doing anything to clean up, like testing the soil or anything like that, they go to Syracuse and get a big Syracuse lawyer to help them fight the EPA for three years, right? Instead of saying, let's do the right thing here. I don't think the EPA was ever out to give, so I've got 30 seconds there.
Well, you know.
I've got a whole bunch of other stuff. I just wanted to clarify.
Normally, the board, we do, we, you know, we go three minutes.
I'm going to let everybody else talk.
Two or three minutes if you'd like.
I've got three minutes here, so if you want me to keep going, I just wanted to clarify who this character was. He's not one of the local boys, he's a professional hitman. I was a member of the Rod and Gun for three years. Most of these guys can confirm that because I barbecued the damn chicken or whatever they did down there. I believe I have as good of understanding of this body as anybody. Doug Swearingen, a former treasurer of the Rod and Gun, did a lot of work on my house. The first thing I want people to understand, the Rod and Gun doesn't get their funding, or they're not funded by guns. It's, they're funded by food service and raffens. The members of the Rod and Gun take a great deal, pride be able to feed 400 people from their outdoor kitchen in the summer. It's a very picturesque, along Salmon Creek, with the well-mowed lawns and trees. Only the Rod and Gun can provide this ability. This sets them apart from all the other gun clubs in Tompkins County. From the beginning, the Rod and Gun was a very social club, not afraid to take a drink or play cards. And I'm not talking about bridge either. They have, at times, there have been times when, in its history, the Rod and Gun stopped shooting altogether. This is what Corky Moser told me. It's common knowledge, not all the members of the Rod and Gun are on board with building a new trap field. They think there's some risks, so, you know, it is, they may have some kind of vote, but there's a lot of them that don't want to participate in this action. That's my sweet spin. Now, this is the nasty stuff. Okay.
I'm not getting personal.
I'm not calling anybody's name, I just quoted my direct Corky Moser. Okay, this whole permit is about one thing, cheap, toxic lead ammunition, nothing else. The corporation, I want to emphasize, this is a corporation, none of these members, they just walk if there's any trouble. The Lansing Rod and Gun wants to use cheap lead ammunition for 20 of its members that shoot trap. Okay, as soon as they start spraying the new field with lead, they're starting a new brownfield site, making the best taxable land the Rod and Gun Corporation has, not taxable to the good people of the town of Lansing. An approval of this new brownfield site is putting 9,000 people in the town of Lansing at risk for cleaning up a toxic waste dump so 20 members of the Rod and Gun Corporation can have cheap, toxic lead ammunition for shooting. It's not 1950 anymore, and I have to tell this board, I'm very proud of you for, you know, standing up to the situation. I can tell you, the D E C for years has basically said, lead is a naturally occurring substance. It's okay to dump. They've known about this for years. And it's, eventually, the EPA picked up the story and said, we got to do something. This is just stupid. So if you think the New York D E C is going to do anything, they're not going to do a damn thing because they don't want to clean it up. They didn't do anything down in Fall Creek, they called the EPA up and said, come help us. You know, this is, you know, and if the local people don't care, they're just going to gnaw right over you. That's more than my three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ted Farrell, and Lisa Rizika and I have lived at 101 Salmon Creek Grove for almost 20 years. We've had a really good relationship with the Rod and Gun Club. Their rifle range is right, starts right in our backyard. Now, one of my favorite things about the Rod and Gun, they almost never shoot towards our house. They want to turn around and shoot toward our house. And if you look at this land for the, for the new trap field, if the left line goes right down our property line, and the 300-yard safety zone goes past our house and across Salmon Creek Grove. I don't understand how a safety zone can have a road in it. Now, last year, the Tompkins County covered area, or made the area a unique natural area. And that, a unique natural area, well, it's not a regulatory designation. It does not provide legal protection for an area. Instead, it provides an alert to municipal planning and decision-making processes that resources exist that may require modification of proposed activities. Well, that unique natural area is where this lead is going. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons we don't like this. They're shooting towards the house, they're going to tear down the woods near our house and dig up the lead. My thinking, if set at their best alternative would be to shoot steel. Everybody knows that lead becomes a bigger and bigger poison all the time. You can't even solder your water pipes with lead anymore. Can't have it in your paint, can't have it in your car. There's no safe amount of lead in drinking water. I just think that this whole lead shop then may be missed in the.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Hi, I just wanted to, my name is Melanie Malone, I'm in Myers area. And I just have mostly questions, and I don't know if that's okay to ask questions, but the EPA order on consent. I'm sorry? So we can hear you? My name's Melanie Malone, she's in the Myers area.
You guys speak to the ladies very cool, but I don't know.
I can talk about her.
I knew you could.
As far as the order on consent that was issued by the EPA, it's, as you said, clearly states in there that the EPA determined that the order was necessary to protect public health and the environment. So that means us, our wildlife, our environment. The order clearly explained, and other people have spoken tonight, it's very clear that lead is a hazard solid waste. And it's very clear that the lead at 155 Salmon Creek Grove can impact the health of residents, other town members, depending on where it goes in the soil and the water, definitely the wildlife. And it's also clear that the club does have some role in the community, and so I guess it's kind of a balance in determining what you're going to do. Mostly, my questions are, were each of the options, EPA's options, fully, you know, given adequate attention, because it doesn't seem that way? The four options, if I have it correctly, was the permit, I mean, prohibited shooting activities that you could use lead ammunition, to give the certain relocation of the shooting platforms within environmental stewardship plan, or to close the quote. So the first option is dismissed as not feasible for membership due to the cost of steel shot and E T A events, which you already mentioned. So given the seriousness of this matter, could the town request this statement be expanded upon? What are the actual other types of non-toxic, non-lead ammunition? And where are the objective listings of price comparisons between these to support the argument that the lawyers are making here? The second option, the curtain has been declined because it would be allowed in consultation. So I don't know if that's actually been investigated fully. And the third option, changing the shooting location and enacting a stewardship plan. Tompkins County has designated two unique natural areas and two important duty areas that are close proximity to the acreage of the club. Each of these areas is in need of protection from lead. This further emphasizes the importance of a strong stewardship plan, and I think that is not what they presented. The stewardship plan lacks objective measures and clear assignment of accountability. There's really no specific tie-in with each action measure in the plan, and who's going to do it, and when and how, and who's ultimately responsible. There's no timeframe or intervals, et cetera. Have there been any option of speaking with other, you know, developing a partnership that could go forward on this instead of just the club? Is there anything, would you help participate? And I'm just wondering what the club would anticipate the cost is for moving location of the shooting area? And what is the cost for implementing this new stewardship plan? For instance, hiring contractors and helping us with this. Lastly, I would like to know, what is the long-term plan? Is there a plan for lead remediation if the gun club disapproves? And generally, when I've been reading about this recently, it seems that there's a general consensus to move away from lead shot at outdoor shooting ranges as a way of allowing the shooting ranges to continue to stay open. Is this going to be part of the transition? Do you allow this contract to stay open? Those are my comments on this, any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Nicholson, and I'm in Lubbock. I've been there for almost forty years, which is about two-thirds of the resistance of the Lubbock. And, uh, I'd like to recommend that the club switch to steel shot. I think it would be cheaper in the long run for them, for the members, and I just don't see justification for continuing to use hazardous, toxic lead shot for what is a hobby. It's not anybody's life of the, it's not, it's not capable, it's a hobby. And so, um, the public is being asked to take on quite a threat as well as our, the health of our wildlife. I think that the environmental stewardship and reclamation plan document is, does not protect public health or, uh, wildlife. As you, as we talked about, there's this, once every five years, we'll go out there and try to collect, uh, lead, and hogs here will test the soil age to see if they need to grow some more in that area. And that is the extent of, um, supposedly electric stewardship plan. Uh, all of this has brought up a lot of questions. Um, I'm wondering, um, won't the lead clouds disappear into the forest floor litter and grassy sod? Won't much of it be constantly available to wildlife, to the birds and the wildlife out there to ingest throughout that entire area constantly, basically, except for the long month that they're out there, you know, ripping the soil up? So, wildlife is not protected from it. And I'm also wondering how much is gonna be washed down in slope and then rains from Salmon Creek? We all know we're having, um, Jamie decline, scarecrow, flooding, secondary damages, and floods. I also wonder, um, who is supposed to inspect and enforce this stewardship plan? And will gun club members be billed for any enforcement and inspection processes rather than taxpayers? And I wonder what records are gonna be kept of the, uh, number and weight of the lead bullets that are fired on this range over the five-year period so we can assess what kind of reclamation of lead that would occur? Uh, and I'm wondering, has anybody, as I've returned, what recovery is sufficient to protect our community's health and our living system from this new second hazard sway site that's been proposed? I'd like to recommend that the town get the names and the addresses of all current gun club members so that they can be advised with the letter from the town on their legal allegations and this, so to just make sure that all those members actually know what they might be getting into as time goes by. Um, you know, because we may only have the record law now at the federal level on lead, but that doesn't mean laws might not change and cleanups be mandated. And then, I'd like to make sure that the rest of the rest of the taxpayers aren't handed the, for that cleanup. It doesn't, uh, it seems like the people may be less, you know, should be the ones responsible for cleaning it up. And, um, it does seem like, uh, I'm wondering, uh, if this cleanup plan is feasible, why can't it be demonstrated on the existing shot call zone? Someone who walked that creek told me that the estimated, only about eight of the shot call area is the emergency weapon, the rest is, you know, spring bank and the forest on the other side and the grassy area in front, so why can't they see how good this cleanup? They've been shooting since nineteen sixty. Somebody else told me they estimated about three tons of lead a year is shot there. So, you know, maybe over a hundred tons of lead has gone, um, into the creeks and on the surrounding land, so can't you see how much is even recoverable? And if it's not recoverable, does that indicate that it's been washed away over the years of, of our wildlife? You know, where has all that lead gone? Um, I'd also like to recommend that the club be asked to pay for monitoring, sample, of, um, soil and water above and all the way down creek to the Low Falls, because the possibility that there's a lot of lead salts in the pool on the Low Falls that have been washed there and humanized in various flood, flood events. So, it'd be interesting to see what's down in the, the water underneath the falls. And also to sample along the creek depths. Um, and maybe the Kewa Lake Interdustrial Organization could help with identifying appropriate certified contractor who'd be sent out there to take the samples and to determine the, um, the, uh, the amount of lead in its various forms that's out there. Um, and, um, I, I also, uh, I mean, it's kind of weird, I'm issued PH because, um, it's based on soil sample PH, but in the litter of the forest where there are, you know, you have broken decomposition of the ground cover and the leaves and twigs and everything that falls in there, it tends to be a little bit more acid, you know, in the decomposition process. Um, so, I'm so sure that measuring soil PH is the same as measuring the pellets sitting in a mix of, you know, decomposing litter and what's made soluble under those circumstances. Um, I don't think we should go with any of these assumptions about the solubility of lead shot that's out there. Um, and I'd, I'd love to see that before it's approved, that that sampling process happens, and the public be able to see the data from that sampling process so that we know what our current pattern sway site is generating before a, a second one is approved.
Regarding the reclamation process, five years is that they take two to three feet of soil and remove it. And I'm just trying to picture on a slope, if every five years you're taking two to three feet of dirt out, can, can throwing grass seed on there actually hold the bank? I mean, you're gonna get steeper than the angle of repose at some point, and, you know, gravity's gonna do its thing. It just seems like you might be opening a can of worms there, uh, making a pot.
It's put back, it's sort of put back.
The soil's put back. So, it's, it's all then sifted and everything, and then put back, so there's, you know, root structures in it or anything. It's, isn't it gonna be kind of like sloughing right off? That's, that's...
I agree, yeah, I can't...
We would want, because of the size of the thing, we have stormwater regulations in the town, and the stormwater, uh, design plans take into account the slope of the area that's being remediated. For instance, on slopes that exceed three and, uh, three and one, I believe it is, you're supposed to use a binding fabric to hold the seed in place until the seed is, uh, catches it. And then, termination of the project, product doesn't occur, or of the project does not occur until eighty percent of the affected area is completely covered. And that's eighty percent of every square foot, that's not eighty percent of ten thousand square feet. So, that's, that's the way the regulations read. So, they do take into account the steepness of the slope as far as, uh, preparing and doing the recovery of the area that's, that's affected, if that's any help. I do that, I know that because that's my business.
And I think I'm gonna leave this public hearing open. I'm gonna read this letter from the EPA that I got tonight and, uh, cross it. Um, this letter is submitted by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Region Two, EPA Region Two, RCA Compliance Branch, R C B, in the Division of Enforcement and Compliance Assistance. There's a lot of mumbling, gentlemen, there about. Uh, regarding the above referenced Lansing Rod and Gun Club's application of relocating traffic through shooting range located at fifty-five Salmon Creek Grove. Due to the short notice provided to EPA Region Two's R C B, we are unable to send a representative to attend the town of Lansing's public hearing, you know, on March twelfth. We therefore are submitting this letter to provide information to the town's planning board regarding EPA's involvement in the act of this matter, Lansing Rod and Gun Club, or respondent. EPA Region Two and Lansing Rod and Gun Club entered an administrative order on consent, uh, A O C or Order Rocket Number, uh, by the way, in the care. This A O C was issued pursuant to Section seven zero zero three, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act on September twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. The RCA seven zero zero three A O C is used where a respondent is cooperative and willing to work jointly with EPA to address a situation that poses a potential endangerment to people or the environment. The order was issued to the club, requiring it to take steps to prevent lead shot from, from shooting range from entering the nearby wetlands area and Salmon Creek, located in close proximity to the club's trap fields and shooting range. Uh, the order provides options for the club to stop lead shot from entering the wetlands area and the creek. The order also directs the club to develop and implement an environmental stewardship plan using EPA's best management practices, which was talked about, for lead at outdoor shooting ranges after the club decides how best to stop the lead shot from entering the wetlands area and creek, assuming a continued stop rate. On July twentieth, two thousand seventeen, the club informed EPA Region Two that flooding in the local area severely impacted the club's property and the site of the shooting range. Flooding made the club's initial plan for complying with the order no longer feasible or possible. Thereafter, the club has pursued steps to obtain approval from the town's planning board to relocate the shooting range to a new site. EPA Region Two supports the relocation of the shooting range, provided all legal requirements are met, and believes that it properly implemented and satisfied the order requirements to stop lead shot from entering the wetlands area of Salmon Creek. EPA Region Two is anxious for the club to obtain the necessary approvals and to implement, without further delay, the relocation of the shooting range to comply with the order and stop lead shot from entering the wetlands and the creek. EPA believes these, that these actions will help protect a sensitive wetlands area and the creek from the adverse effects associated with lead shot. Should you require any additional information regarding this, please contact, uh, I gave a bunch of names here, attorneys and esquires and stuff, uh, that should be, uh, careful. Um, so that's their letter that I got.
This is the only letter that was in previous ones, was?
Um, the only other thing is the consent order.
Consent order is many pages long. Did you, did you get that?
Yeah, I did.
That I was...
There was the original consent.
Yes, that I was...
So, there was nothing between the consent orders, just like...
Actually, almost all of it was on the website.
Yeah.
You can read that on the website.
So, I still don't see this letter where it extends their ability, I say, two months to use lead shot.
They have done that previously, according to the stuff that I've read.
I stand open for correction.
He included that, yes, no.
He didn't include it in this letter, but I had seen it in writing earlier. I stand ready to be corrected.
I was...
But one thing I wanted to point out is that all this data is on the town's website, so if anybody wants to see these and get these contact names, addresses, and phone numbers, the information is all on the website, and are more than welcome to, uh, take a look at it that way. In addition, we have asked tonight for more information, particularly about the supposed trap association's non-sanctioning of steel shot shoots. We've asked for that information, and, uh, they agreed to produce the information for us. We don't want to go into this thing blind.
I think we've also requested to see if there's any tests available of the stream or, or... So, so we have a, we have a basis, we, we need a, we need a basis point. This is where we are, above, this is where we are below, and if we, if we need to, as part of the review process, say, it'll be tested in four years or five years when they come to remediate, um, we have a basis point to, to, to look at at any rate. Um, I, I think that's only proven. Uh, again, this, this ten creek feeds into the lake, which feeds into over a hundred thousand people's water supply, so it's, it's not only affecting neighbors next door, it's affecting everybody.
There's been seventy years where it's a shooting yard, and if the water quality, if the water's tested above and below, and they end up the same, it doesn't seem to mean there's any effect.
Well, that, that, wouldn't that be great, great to know? Yeah, we'd love to know. Yes, we'd love to know.
Is that for the wildlife?
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't account, and, and I think, uh, Ms. Nicholson raised a good point, and I mentioned every, every year in New York State, there's about two to three dozen fallen eagles killed that are examined by the DEC. Over half of these eagles are dead from lead poisoning. Another few are shot, lead poisoning, in, in the runway. So, you know, the, the wildlife does get this. If it sets there for five years or four years, and, and wildlife does eat on it, and we say, well, we're remediating it, well, okay, but it's got four years to be dispersed. Um, I, I think there's great opportunity here for, and this is just me speaking, gun lovers, and I'm one of them, I have multiple guns, I love hunting. Um, years ago, I turned down the Salmon Creek Gun Club for the fact that they would not stop using lead, and there's a great opportunity here to, to show the people of this community that they're really gonna do the right thing. And doing the right thing, in my opinion, is catching all the lead that you can immediately.
That, that looks to me like the rifle range and the hand, the range, bullet traps are spot on.
They work, they, you know, it...
Put us up.
The use of steel shot is, is certainly a feasible alternative. They use it hunting, hunting, uh, waterfowl successfully. They shoot lots of ducks and lots of geese, so, so, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't have the impact that lead does. I understand that, I get that. I've hunted both of those. But it works. Also, in light, in terms of full disclosure, because I know the number of you know that I am a member of the Rod and Gun Club and have been for a number of years, I am also a New York State certified outdoor education instructor, and the, um, Lubbockville, Lansing Rod and Gun Club in Lubbockville is one of our venues for holding these courses. Um, well, sidebar doesn't mean anything to what goes on here, but when I hunt, I use steel shot, and when I hunt deer, I've shifted over to using copper, because one of the places that the eagles was getting the lead poisoning was from eating carrion and then shot with lead. So, it's not, sportsmen are not irresponsible slugs just casting lead around out there. We're all in a program. New York State is starting to recommend the use of copper slugs for deer rather than lead. I, like I said, I shifted to that a couple of years ago, and, um, the, the hunters, the members of the club that I know of are responsible, and they're trying to get ahead of the curve on this thing. That's one of the reasons that we asked for information on the, um, regulations of the sanction, the sanctioning of the shoots. And it's not just twenty people at the club that shoot. The leagues bring in people from other clubs in this region of the state, so it's not as, not as has been, uh, presented, a very narrow field of people that do, uh, get, get an opportunity to shoot here. Also, uh, if you've read the documentation, you've read the, uh, the mission statement of the club, and remember that they provide scholarships for students who have special interests in conservation, and I know for a fact that they've done restocking of fish over the years when they've been able to obtain a place to, to, to do their, their seeding. Uh, like I say, I don't use the lead shot, and I would love to see the club shift over to the steel shot. I'm, I'm in agreement with Tom on that. Well, mark that down. But, it, but, but we have to have full information about the restrictions that the, that the association that the club belongs to have for their sanctioned shoots.
Where are the other places where these sanctioned shoots take place, and couldn't they just be there instead of here?
Yeah, sorry. No, that, that's one of the questions, is can you potentially clean up or sanction shoot it in another location?
Uh, yeah. I'm, uh, have a trap shooter, uh, I use lead shot.
And if you move to steel, why?
I try steel shot.
Give the guy a chance.
If doesn't work well, pardon?
Don't mind.
I said, I said, totally give you a chance, though. Well, anyway, uh, most of the trap shooters, or probably everybody I know, will shoot steel shot near firearms. It's, uh...
It's a lot of the firearms have different chokes, which are full chokes to shoot trap with, and you can't shoot steel through a full choke, you know, it just doesn't work, it's not recommended. Even the manufacturers don't want you shooting steel through a tight choke, you know, used for trap shooting. It's just, they won't do it, some of these guns are twenty thousand dollars or more, you know, what these people are using, they don't want to ruin them. And if you did switch to steel shot at Lansing Rotten Gun Club or any other...
How about business or something like that? Does business work as well or something more expectant?
If you would buy them for me, I would shoot them.
Yeah, but if you can afford a twenty thousand dollar...
I don't have a twenty thousand dollar gun, I'd like to stay retired. But what I'm saying is, if you went to steel shot at any gun club around here, I don't care where it is, New York State, Pennsylvania, you wouldn't have any trap shooters. They would not come, they would not shoot. And as far as your lead, being bad, and the DEC saying it's bad, yeah, they restricted it, you can't buy it. Lead split shot for fishing, all of our streams in New York State, you cannot buy it in this state, but you can use it. You can buy it in Pennsylvania, you can buy it in Pennsylvania, you can use it in all of our trout streams, okay? So maybe the eagles are dying from certain amounts of stuff they eat, but boy, they love fish, and where the fish are, you know, you're going to have lead in the streams. All your trout fishermen use lead.
Thank you.
I got a twenty second comment. You know, if you think that the federal government and the state government is going to help us in this situation, talk to the people in Flint, Michigan. I believe it, you know, they can't solve everybody's problems, especially if they're very difficult, you got Ed's faction, you know, Ed's favorite people here that he's going to vote yes to whatever they say, you got the Democrats and all that, and you know, the federal government doesn't want to get involved in that. They want, you know, people to solve their own problems at the local level, because we understand the situation. And like I said, the Rotten Gun has plenty of money to do good things, but it ain't coming from guns. It's from food service and raffles and stuff like that, they don't make a cent on guns.
That is wrong.
Okay.
Are you going to the public hearing or the close?
Just getting started.
Did you finish?
I think so.
There's a couple of things I want to add.
Your names?
Louis Jackson, I'm also a member of the Rotten Gun Club for about twenty-five years. The first thing I wanted to address is the five hundred foot, we are shooting, we've made provisions for that, do not shoot within five hundred feet of those people's house over there. That's the first one I wanted. I shoot about six or seven states with three to four thousand trap shooters at these shoots for the world championship all over the country. There ain't a one of them that shoots steel or bioodegradable materials. You aren't going to get people to come to this club and spend fifteen dollars for a box when they spend five dollars for... So you're going to shut down about seventy percent of our income. And if he was there for three years, he ought to know how many shooters come to that club.
You're saying your income part of your income is earned from invitation shoots?
Most of it.
That's your interest.
Tell me, it's okay.
Can you tell us how many shooters come in a season for trap shooting?
Exactly. We have some leagues that have a hundred and seventy-five people now that come. A registered shooter through the EPA will have sixty to eighty. We try to get two or three of them a year. Outside practice, I really couldn't tell you. We just really started trying to keep track of that matter because of this ongoing situation. We don't keep real good track of practice shooters and people that come a lot in the area.
When you're shooting trap, you're typically shooting hundreds, two hundred targets?
A specific event is a hundred targets in three different disciplines. It's called sixteen handicap and doubles. So if a guy shoots the full program, he's shooting three hundred rounds a day. So that's your question.
When you have your events, how is the six parking spots going to be adequate when they have the plans?
We still have to maintain the gun club where it's at, and everything will be run through that gun club.
But you still have to go across the creek.
We'll still be driving across the bridge.
So you're going to go across Salmon Creek Bridge, or you're going to go across the bridge that you...
You won't find a trap shooter walking over that bridge. They aren't hunting people, they're going to drive over there and they're going to drive back to the club.
But you're not going to have enough parking spaces, six isn't going to be adequate for that.
You may have to run shovels. You do that in a lot of places, from the world championship in Sparkin, Illinois, to Florida state shoots, they run shovels.
I mean, Mike, that road there, I drive it every single day, and that road is, and it's a blind corner, it's fifty-five miles an hour, it's a dangerous road as it is, and you put more traffic there, and if you have guys parking along the side of the road, it's really going to be dangerous.
We do not occasionally get people parking on the side of the road, but we try to prohibit that.
I think parking and access to the suicide site, we're going to have to address that site plan, you know, if you have a ton of people.
I'm not even sure where the six parking places come from, I didn't see that in the plan that I sent. I'm sure it's there, but I'm not sure where that came from.
There's other venues in town like PSC and everything else that run periodic large events that have traffic overflows, so, you know, I think we can address that, but if it's an ongoing weekly issue, then I think we...
It could be a dangerous situation.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, especially in the, you know, the hours where we have not a lot of daylight, people are parked on the road.
Yeah, I'm just concerned this whole thing, certainly the impact on the ZEBS.
I still can't figure out how exactly far away from my house it is. You know, this range of shooting, I just, I can't really tell from the map, it's like three hundred at the widest area, and I see two hundred, one hundred, and I'm like, how far away from my house is this?
I think you have to have the surveyors might have that.
Yeah, well, do they measure where everybody decides it's okay to have a shooting range behind my house? And with lead shot where my well is and, I mean, and my garden, let alone, you know, we all care about wildlife and the environment, but wow, boy, I'm really impacted by this. Like, I would never have moved into that house ever if there was a shooting range. I mean, I would never have bought it.
Well, I heard you were going...
Yeah, I don't understand the argument, I'm Julie Manners, I don't understand the argument that the steel ammunition is cheaper or is more expensive than the lead. That's spoken by people who are taking responsibility. They're thinking, oh, well, we're not going to have to pay for the giant amount of environmental action that's going to happen. It's just talking about this little piddly twenty dollars a box or whatever it is. So it's not, it's very small picture, it's not big picture.
So this is starting to be lighted, so the trap is going to be lighted?
At some point.
At some point, so it's part of the first phase, there's no lights?
Right.
So do we need a plan?
If they came to us with a plan for no lights and then changed the lights, they'd have to come through the site plan.
I don't know. I'd like to know what the purpose of the three hundred yard safety zone is. How can you tell you that?
I can tell you what I think it is, all right? The safety zone is required under the best management practices and the other anything. The safety zone is an area where you can't shoot into. The safety zone is considered a buffer zone to the whole field.
It's right in the middle of your target zone.
Safety zone is... I'll find out for you.
Well, how do we find out when you find out?
What's the data on that best management practice?
I'm not sure what the data is. This is the existing program, it's endorsed by the...
I think it's pretty old.
Ed Guster is down in Puerto Rico right now, that's why I couldn't reach him on the phone today.
Yeah, he's helping the people out and sort of resources.
Yes, he did acknowledge in earlier conversations that the BME manual is quite outdated, and EPA has a limited budget and hasn't been able to deal very well with the shooting ranges and its impact on the environment, and the law, current federal law, isn't very strong on this particular topic, and as I said earlier, that hasn't been changed, as more people become aware of the threat. Now, I want to emphasize again the fact that this is a hobby activity, a voluntary hobby activity, and weigh that against the threats to public health. We were looking at local Lansing law, the Lansing law's purpose is for the health, safety and general welfare of the community and to conserve the value of property. So all the folks in Lumberville have a concern with, you know, at what point does that become designated as a hazardous waste site right next to the village and how will that affect property values in the inlet? The stormwater law prohibits illicit discharges, again, the purpose to provide for the health, safety and general welfare, and for those living not only here but around Cuyahoga Lake and its tributaries and watersheds. And then Lansing stormwater erosion control law requires a time review and proof based stormwater pollution prevention plan for this then clean up, and we want to make sure that this is not ended up being segmented review under the requirements of SEER, you know, that the entire long-term plan gets understood and looked at in detail now. And also, that same law does define point source pollution to include heavy metals. And I do not recall reading the, I think on the word of the things that you throw up, the targets that you're shooting at.
Clay.
The clay, the clay mints, right. But they also have a lot of heavy metals in them, and they're shattered all over the landscape, and, you know, they're a toxic thing as well to a lot of accumulating in the environment and definitely...
They used to, they don't anymore.
That was changed. Mr. Carroll, do you have any historical data on other remediation sites?
There's a whole bunch of them on the EPA website.
No, but I'm not going to go over them, you've got to get them first.
What are you looking for?
You take a gun club like this that's relatively small, maybe in comparison to some of the larger sites.
The only time that there's...
No, let me finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You call in remediation experts in five years and say, we're going to clean this up. They come in and you would pass a sample and say, there ain't enough here for us if I were to come out. What happens then?
That's what happens with every site. The whole thing is, is it is not a remediation site, it is not a hazardous waste site as long as it's not abandoned. The only time that you will see this turn into a hazardous waste site is if the club is forced out.
But EPA is telling you every five years you're going to remediate it.
No, that's part of this environmental stewardship plan, that's not a requirement.
So you're not going to do it if they can't?
No, it's part of the consent order. The environmental stewardship plan, if they don't do this environmental stewardship plan, then they're in violation of the consent order.
I understand that.
And then they're in violation of the EPA.
But in five years, you get them out there and you can't find a remediation company that wants to take this down because this is not, they're not going to make enough money.
Then it's between the EPA and the club if it's a violation of the consent order.
Okay.
So can you get that information on what this whole thing means? Because we don't have an understanding of what this safety zone is. Yeah, but we, like, we don't know what it means, I think we could go to class and perhaps somebody could share about that, because it's like, yes, right.
I'll get you all of that, excuse me.
And how will I get that information?
She has an email address or something. I can give you that, I can mail you.
Well, I like this one, I think one...
I mean, you're saying that you're in that zone, is that right?
Yeah.
But I was...
Forty years ago.
Maybe you're safe around the night, or somewhere else.
Well, yeah. Dancing around is better.
What's the under order again, sorry, digressing. I think we need to go back to and discuss this, you know, a little more about the public hearing. I'm going to just end the public hearing, I'm going to close it, we're going to keep it open, and if we have, we'll be discussing this probably at the next meeting also, and I probably will either probably open it up again for more public comments at that time. I urge you to send emails to the town of Lansing Planning Department if you have other or different or added concerns, and we will...
We'll combine them all.
Combine them all and so from this board, and they'll become aware and public knowledge on the website also, so everybody can read what's happened.
And the information will all get to the town board?
The information eventually will, well, the town boards will be, I mean, there's several right here listening now, they're getting in here, and they'll be at it all too. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would, I don't know if we have to hear a motion for this, this is just a resolution that resolved that the planning board of the town of Lansing purposes to be the lead agency. I don't know why you want to do this.
So the town board is back, the town board came back.
For coordinated, I'm the only guy telling them. The planning board of the town of Lansing purposes to be the lead agency for coordinated environmental review and in connection therewith, it is determined as follows, this action is classified as an unlisted action, and for you that don't know, there's a number of different actions in the New York State Environmental Conservation List that classifies different actions, and this is an unlisted action, which means really nothing to you. The planning board and town board of the town of Lansing are the only involved agencies, and the interest of the agencies are determined to be the town planning department, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And as further, state environmental quality review knows intent to establish lead agency pursuant to six NYC are part six seventeen point six, and I'm here in motion to...
Second. Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, here we go. But if you're interested in this action, which I'm sure a lot of you are, track the website and follow it, it'll be listed as an agenda article that we'll talk about next, it may not be the next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks.
Twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth.
But it may not, we may not get anything back by the...
Because of this letter, we've had to pack a long time, I think we should... So we're going to specific and replace that by the EPA representative, show up next week and we'll discuss this.
Yes, absolutely.
But what he's saying is if it was a brand new project, shooting over the creek or in this...
Near the creek on a side hill.
Would we suggest to the people maybe they find it? They would get permission to do it from the DEC or the EPA. What the DEC and the EPA or what you had is a continual use...
Trying to make it better.
Yeah. As a continual use and they're trying to make it better, how would we support them? That's the way that they look at it that way. No, we wouldn't.
What was he saying?
If it wasn't already an existing club, it would be...
What was he saying we're looking at when the property is abandoned?
We're looking at...
I mean, it's annoying right now.
I think we have a mistake from at least best practice that the wetlands left alone if everybody walks away every night.
Unless it becomes a...
There's nothing in stream.
And there's, and the, I have absolutely no reservation about saying whatever is over at the other side is, just in my opinion, is cleaned up before, and while, before this gets permission to go. gets permissioned to go in the other. Whatever can be gotten at, at the old site, best, best practice to clean that up. And I don't disagree with would put it there, but it's a grandfathered use and there's no, no reason to, you know, deny it on that, that phase of things. The lead shot, steel shot, I have to think about that one. I did some reading and it's a two-way street and some, some of the objection about this gun won't handle it or this chug won't handle-
That should come into play.
That, that situation that if everybody's got a steel shot that's competing nationwide, then that's, that's, that, that, I don't like.
First of all, unless you have a custom-made European gun or a gun made in form nineteen sixty, that gun don't hunt.
Well, that's what I said. All hundred and twenty thousand dollars given by this one.
Yeah. And the other thing is the steel shot is a shot cup. That means the steel shot doesn't touch the inside of the gun until it, well, it doesn't touch it. It stays with it.
To what you're saying, I think we need a more detailed map of what the grounds and what is the flood area and what area could be.
I think Kate Nicholson mentioned this. She said that only twelve percent of that is actually in the flood plain. Let's find out if that's true.
True.
And, and, and the other thing, I, I've lived here my entire life. I know that's wet down there occasionally, but I've only seen that area flood out there from the creek.
It happened in ninety-three.
Four, five, four or five times maybe in my lifetime. So the excuse that this is in a flood plain and we can't do this there, it, it doesn't quite fly with me.
What flood were they talking about?
I don't know. They said, well, we had one-
Nearly years ago when you got those-
Wow, they were saying last year. No, they were saying last year.
Eighty-five, eighteen seventeen. I don't, I remember-
It was, it was wet. We had several bad storms that washed stuff all over.
Again, driving, and you drive by that place. I mean, you don't, you don't look out there and see ponds of water continually, do you? No.
But I do see a lot of vehicles.
Oh, God, yes. More than six.
My, again, my biggest concern is parking, parking along the road and people walking down the road.
One thing that I can say, they do that even for big events, seem to have big problems with parking along the road.
No, no, I agree. Right. Moving if they may, that's my-
Well, no, what I'm thinking is we simply say, you know, they, they offered themselves a shuttle.
Yeah. You're talking about probably fifteen people. You're talking about five people at two different, at two different stations, plus you're talking about the operators and whoever's scoring. You're talking fifteen people, something like that. So you probably have ten people and you've got a shuttle back and forth.
As long as they're shuttling, yeah, I don't have a problem. But I, I have a problem if you're going to be parked along the road. It's like a corner. First of all, we have, we, we can control it. We can say no on the road parking. And then perhaps we can afford it by having a ticket. And we can also, we can request that they either provide a bridge. You'd have to check with the guy because I've been told that we can't do a whole lot. But why wouldn't we request that he use a shuttle or have a bridge to handle the traffic crossing?
What, if you want to require an pedestrian bridge or a parking solution? Yeah, they have to get that from the DEC. But I think that goes to the issue Al brought up. What is the point of proving it if you haven't got the bridge? Unless it's sort of where we were going. If you go through all this, but if you can't get the bridge and the whole plant's contingent on the bridge, what are we here for? You're not in the immediate front of us yet.
The parking and the access are all part of the site plan review. And if they, even if they can't do a bridge, which I think the group, they're going to plan that they want to, you see, make them use a shuttle.
It was for the-
Well, I mean, I remember setting them up, saying these guys, if they've got that gun, they're not going to, he said they're not hunters. They're not going to be looking at you. I can't get any kind of shopping over there.
We can't say we have to put away so much money to-
I don't think you're going to be able to.
No, not in precise plan review.
But I think the town board under special use permit might be able to be more stubborn far as what they-
We're talking about environmental bond before decommissioning if you've got solar.
Right, right.
The issue, the issue is that the enforcement of this, we can be as tough as we want and be as concerned as we are about environmental, is that the, the actual testing and, and of the site and maintaining the site is out of our control.
Let me put this way. We can recommend certain things. The town board is the only one that can write it into the burn. We can recommend pretty much whatever we want, that's within reason. And hopefully somebody's going to tell us what's within reason and what's not.
Well, I think we need to come up with an action plan about what, when we come back to these people, we need, we need scale drawings. We need to show the five hundred foot radius from this house and this land basically.
Because the track is, well, turned towards the day. Wait for their comeback. Wait, can a house-
No, we can't. That's what I'm saying. We, we need, we need to have this ready for next meetings. So we give them these things. We need, we need a map of the wetlands designation there and shows exactly where this is in relation to their existing lead shot.
Right, that the existing fields, the existing track fields.
Right.
Like you said, how much of this is in here and how much is not.
Lighting.
The lighting they passed by, but yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to address that at some point because it's, that's only the first.
Well, your condition is-
The water test.
The one thing you may be aware of water test, the pit about the fault was-
Yes. Well, it's the same thing above and below it, whatever.
Yeah.
That could, yeah, actually the amount of the falls might not be a bad idea. You're right.
If they come through with a site plan, have us do a site plan review that doesn't include lighting, if they ever want to add lighting, they've got to do it. It's that simple.
Yeah, because at that point you've got bridges to walk or a house in the dark. Falling in the creek.
Nobody's shooting in the dark.
You know, I've been looking at, this guy's forecasting a month though to clean this site up. I don't see you scraping out two foot of dirt, replanning it and having it go to seed before you use it again, having in a month, but-
It's, it's not going, it's not going to completely go to seed before it's open for use again. The, the eighty percent covers only the N O T. It doesn't mean that the land can't be used while the, while the seeding holds.
All right, so, so, so go out five years. They really haven't created enough lead for anybody to want to come in there and bulldoze this thing out and get rid of it. They walked away and the gun club-
You say they have or have not?
Yes, no.
Are you supposing that they, they don't have enough lead there?
Seriously, you're talking about seven eighths to one and a quarter ounces of lead every time they shoot? And if you're, if you've got a competition going on and you're shooting two hundred to three hundred clays, it's a lot of shooting.
No, it's a lot of lead. I understand. But suppose it's not worthwhile for somebody to come in and do that. They say, we're just not going to do it. And, and the riding gun walks away from it and says, well, we can't afford to clean it ourselves.
I think you need an environmental bond. I think that's a big what if because even, even if you're talking about, there's just so many things that lead is needed for.
Well, I understand that. I just wish, what kind of prices is that?
Two dollars, maybe?
Four cents a pound.
I don't see one. The cost, the price of the-
Well, the sweet or if you're developing world, you need lead. Here, here's my deal. If the EPA says that they have to have it cleaned up every five years, it doesn't make any difference whether it's not lead they're doing, they still got it doing. If that means they have to pay rather than having a dump for the, for the materials, then they have to pay.
And if they don't have the money and they have to go out of business, then they, and they've got an environmental bond.
Does anybody in this room that doesn't think they're going to be paying to clean that site up within twenty years?
What's that?
Is there anybody in this room that doesn't think that some taxpayer money is going to pay to clean that site up within the-
That, that's pretty essential requires an environmental bond.
It's pretty essential for us to make sure that the existing-
Okay.
-is cleaned up before a shovel goes in the ground.
I don't know how far I can go with that, but maybe the town board got a little bit of special permit. To, to me though, it's just, I think I've got pushed back on this wetland area and say, let's not create another area in this town. You guys build your curtains, right? You have your curtains.
Yeah, I certainly look at it.
I, I think they need to relook at it. I, I think that's-
I've asked them several times if we look at it and-
I, you know, I'm, I'm a bit confused there because there's still people in the town talking about the curtains. And the documentation, what we were giving, given says that the DEC is the one that said they couldn't do it because of the flooding.
Right.
And now tonight, he said, he said, no. I said, well, then who wears the diaper? Where's the letter? Where's the DEC saying?
All right, so I think we need to push that issue a little bit. The EPA, that was in the EPA letter.
Yeah. The EPA letter said that the considerations brought up by the DEC meant that they couldn't put up the shot curtains.
Espoir wants to come in.
No, I was going to say one thing about, don't get overly invested in the special permitting as a panacea because site planning is a much broader tool than special permitting. But as to the question of if there's a failure to comply with the five-year reclamation cycle, just have the special permit be immediately revoked if it's not done within the five year in accordance with that reclamation plan.
There you go.
You may still then have an issue of cleanup, but at least you've-
You've stopped.
You've terminated the continuing deposition of the problematic substance.
Is the reclamation bond?
That was, I, I'd have to look to see if that's even within the scope of what you could permissibly do, but to get that, first thing you'd have to have is a phase two. And the cost of environmental assurance, environmental bonds is tens of thousands of dollars if, if for your, yeah, you'd be better off saying no because it would be cheaper.
But if you're saying that there's not enough lead, there still is going to be substantial amount.
Right.
So you're going to be able to pay the difference between what the lead is.
Yeah, I think you're right.
The way, the way I view it, they're required to do it every five years whether there's enough lead there or not, enough being somebody's definition.
But still, you can pay somebody the difference to come in and take out the lead and the difference may be-
There you go.
Ten percent or forty percent.
Well, is that ready?
I don't know. I may even- If the EPA was to have any one thing-
I think it's already in writing.
Yeah.
But if they don't, they're in violation.
So you can pay anybody you need. If the shot, if the shot curtain is forty foot high, so then you're saying it's possible that-
I'm saying that was a, that was a memory I had from quite a few years ago when they proposed it.
How high was a typical, thirty feet high?
What, a bird?
Claymation, no, fifteen, twenty feet.
Most of it will be within twenty feet.
They don't, you should, that's another thing. You're standing underneath and the bird's crossed and they kind of, you're kind of shooting up in the air as feet.
But you've got to remember with, with a number eight one shot, that fall-
It goes, it goes far. Even with a twenty thousand dollar gun.
Another one card.
Yeah, and they're not shooting, you know, three each hand.
See, and they have. All right, so you kind of got a list of the, some of the items?
I'll, I'll ask them to try to find a survey, detailed survey, include on there the flood plain as well as the wetland. Hopefully I'll ask them some information about the curtain.
Any curtain, any water tests?
Any water tests? Yeah, I've asked them, actually tonight that we were leaving, I asked them about the water tests.
Will they give us the shot event rules?
Yeah, we asked for that too.
Shot event rules. Well, you are going to get the distance to the risecus.
I think we ought to-
That's where we're coming from.
That's going to be on the hall.
This is what I had for- I think about five foot portion around, they could be out walking.
I mean, ammunition.
Well, you know, first of all, just either have all, all steel or can't be part of one.
Not over a ton.
Or tungsten, whatever. So everybody should, you should on the same thing.
They can't solicit at the same time.
I think you have to wait until it's fresh up now. If you didn't have a mission first.
So that's why we need to go with the most actual best of the slide.
What, April forty, what's the?
Points on your tab. I mean, two, two things concerning the risecus is that as we look at site plan, one is, is there any way to kind of turn the-
Well, I think that's the range and the other would be some pretty hard to buffer range.
That's why we need, yeah, but that's why we need the survey so we know exactly.
I mean, I think that they're already used to, not that far away, they're already used to the sound of shots coming from them, but not that close. This is extremely close.
And he's got a slope behind him.
Right, they can turn it.
That's good.
They're still going to need some leasings.
You're shooting into the side of the hill.
Shooting into the side of the hill.
On one side.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be good if Guy could give us a parameter of exactly what the planning board has the ability to say and, and what the town board does because apparently they're very different. And I'm not clear what you guys are able to say in terms of yes, no on this project. I have no idea what the town board is able to say yes or no.
Well, under, under site plan review, we can address lighting, we can address traffic and access and a very limited number of other things, but we can make recommendations to the town board and particularly if we're the lead agency here, we can make recommendations to the town board based on the long form environmental assistance.
I understand. I'm just, you know, I, I don't know how much pushback we're allowed to have other than saying no to the whole thing and I'm not sure how much, what basis we can say no. And I, I, and, and I don't know those answers, so I don't even know what we're deciding.
I think given this board, any questions that we have are going to be very, very clear to the town board when we make the presentation. And the town board is going to know how much pushback they've got legally when they, when they approach it.
I'd like to know that earlier in the process if you-
Well, yeah, we're going to-
That's why-
That's what I'm saying. I think it'd be really good if Guy could clarify.
We're still developing it.
Yes, I know.
We're still developing it.
To know where those boundaries are, the first thing you're going to want is a record. And as you've been pursuing, the first thing you want is a complete record. Frankly, SEER is going to be the tool to get to most of these issues. Because if, if, if they don't resolve these issues by express mitigation to reduce anything that you find is a potential negative, moderate, or significant impact, they're going to go to an E I S and scoping and that, you know, that process would be more than the cost of the curtain.
Well, that was one of my questions to you, to at what point do you feel, I mean, could this ever meet in your opinion an E I S demand?
Well, if, if, if a positive declaration is issued, then you're going to have to go through the E I S process unless the project is abandoned. So if you're going to go through the E I S process, the question I guess you're asking is can you get to the point in the E I S process where you believe that the potential impacts are remediated to the greatest extent known to reasonable science?
And that's why we have to have these questions answered so that we can make-
Well, I would think you can make a positive or negative declaration without that information. But in terms of the conditions that you can put on them, there's a whole battery of rules and I can give you lots of cases on it because it's the current hot button issue on land use in the United States Supreme Court. But your, your conditions have to be directly connected to your record, they have to be reasonable, and there has to be proportionality between the cost and impact of the condition and the cost and impact of the harm that you're trying to mitigate. So we may all agree that it's nice to have, to be able to see pelicans, but that doesn't mean that if you want to put up a dock, you have to spend seven million dollars on a pellet restoration project because they tend to get killed on the ends of dock by, by boggers and fishing lines and stuff like that. So there's a rule of proportionality that applies to any condition. You have some pretty broad ground you can cover so long as the record demonstrates that you're acting in furtherance of the standards of site planning, but your underlying issue that you're going to have to recognize at some point or another is that this isn't allowed use in that zone.
And, and where does the EPA recommendation sit? Like if you follow these best practices, that's one reason to keep going, but if you still have to be responsible for any cleanup at the end of the day, that's where I think that's one reason to keep going, but if you still have to be responsible for any cleanup at the end of the day, that's where I think the greatest concern is here.
Yeah, I mean, but you're, it's, it's, when he says that RECA doesn't have a cleanup provision, yeah, okay, great, you know, that's circling. That's like saying that speeding isn't covered by the conservation law for, you know, misuse of resources is covered by the vehicle and traffic law. Except in Minnesota, of course, where there is a conservation violation. But, but that, that sort of saying RECA doesn't cover that is a bit of a, uh.
Yeah, so we want a bit of a challenge to be, you know.
So the, the E P A question to me from a legal perspective comes down to one of what is the impact on Seeker? Um, because an E P A consent order is considered the equivalent of and is not subject to N I P A. So you have a superior jurisdiction that may have approved a plan and said, this remediates the lead problem. It doesn't necessarily address all of the site planning problems, but if that determination by the E P A is giving proclusive effect, your seeker's gonna be very simple. Your site plan review might not be so simple.
Right, well, I think that's.
Because the remediation issue would, might necessarily be covered, but not necessarily the other impact issues, including the future impact of adding additional lead to the site.
Except for the fact that there are questions in the long form that address neighborhood issues. They have nothing to do with.
Correct.
Environment other, other than, uh.
Right.
Quality of life.
Right, remediation of the site issues might be cleared up if, if the E P A determination is preemptive, but the other seeker issues are still there. That's what I mean.
And that's why we need a survey. That's why we need all that other information.
So I, I would, you know, obviously I can take a look at that, but I would say the first best step is to get your evidence and get the E P A officials in here. And see what, what they have to say about it. I can certainly, you know, look and see how it's being preemptive, but just figuring out whether or not a consent order under CirclA or RECA, CirclA is the cleanup and then there's SARA, the Superfund Amendment Reauthorization Act. There's a whole bunch of acronyms. It's a language unto itself. Consent orders and determinations, remedial orders, cleanup orders, they're not subject to N I P A. They don't fall under the National Environmental Program for reviewing actions because they are presumed and considered and classified both administratively and by the courts, interestingly though, not necessarily by Congress, as acts in furtherance of the environment. In other words, if you wanna try to mine rare earths in California, you're gonna be stuck in N I P A review and challenges for fifteen years. That's in fact already happened. That's why the companies go over to Africa and wipe out all the forests to get this stuff. So, you know, there's not, it's not green to deny a permit. It just moves the impacts to another part of the globe so you can feel them in ten years instead of two. Um, so the E P A understands that if, if they were subject to N I P A, for every time they did a consent order, they could never advance the ball environmentally because they'd be litigating for ten to fifteen years over what the terms of the consent order is. So the reason that they're in favor of this, at least on paper, is they're trying to improve the existing situation. Whether or not that's enough for you guys in terms of site planning, the town board's terms of special permitting is a, is a separate question. So they're looking at the environmental aspects and you're looking at all of the aspects, including impact on neighbors, traffic, parking. And like I said, I'm a question of if they don't do the five-year cleanup, that would be a, um, contempt order. That would be an instant fine, instant violation process. It may take one to two years to figure out what that is in a district court, but I would simply say that the special use permit would inspire that situation.
Are those special use permits one year renewable or they just?
Well, most special permits, very, there is authority for a special use permit to be renewable. Um, that's questionable. There's cases going both ways on that. Some municipalities do it, some don't. My position on it is unless you've got a really solid reason, the record for it, usually it's the wrong place to go.
I don't think you could do it in this situation.
We went through that with Jack Young soccer field.
See that?
We went through that with Jack Young.
Right, like you're, 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 what you're saying is a very common understood position in planning and in site planning. Is that once you give a special use, it's like saying, well, we're gonna give you a variance, but you have to come back and renew it. Um, now, if they violate a special permit, like the conditions of the special permit, you can, it can be revoked automatically and they have to reinstate, or you can revoke it. Renewals are very problematic. Is there case law that says you can do it? Yes, there is. Is that, is there more case law that takes those things down at their knees and tortures the municipality in trying to do it? Yes, there is. So I would make the violation be the, the trigger for revocation now.
So, so a, a good, clean, clear, concise.
Yep.
Set of rules to follow. And if you don't, we'll be, we're yanking that book use.
Yeah, and that's assuming you all get to a, a recommendation of yes on the site land and, and yes on the special permit.
Right.
I mean, I don't even think you're, have enough information to get to that point yet, so.
Guy, Guy, I've had the same question. You've probably heard me ask earlier on the consent order, where it very specifically states they have eighteen months. And then we've got this letter that says, now it's no longer feasible or possible, but they don't give any, they don't give any extension of time in this letter. So that's, that says to me that they, they can't continue once they get past the end of this month.
Right. One spot in there that they said is, is if they get to the process, the process takes them, like the planning board, it didn't say planning board specifically, not in the letter.
In the conditions, the conditional.
If, if they got into the process and the process took a longer, then they could continue what they're doing.
Right, the force.
It's in the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did see that.
And federal deadlines like that where they're administratively set, for instance, um, you know, since it's, it's a, in bankruptcy, you have to have, debtor has four months to affirm or deny an executive order. And they still have to affirm or deny a certain lease for a certain manufacturer and plant of duty that have been on a year. So the four months is pretty flexible. I would like to see what their outside limit is for something like that, but it's not really a problem for them, them to extend the consent order. If they haven't seen a substantial change in circumstances that warrants changing the terms of the order, they probably, it's probably somewhat ministerial to extend it another eighteen months if you have to. I mean.
So I'm just wondering how it impacts them as an organization if they go down there and start shooting trap in May and it's after the eighteen months? And they haven't gotten any kind of, anything right? That's a sugar that you can expect.
I'm not sure without clarification on that they should, but.
Probably, most likely what they like to see is progress. If you're making progress, then they leave. If all of a sudden there's a roadblock and everything shuts down, then the E P A will give them a deadline, hard deadline, such as getting by this or your.
We can give it a reasonable, you know, questions to answer.
I mean, your time points is.
I don't think Wiggins is gonna do that.
They're, you know, they've been at this since two thousand thirteen. So, you know, it's five years. You know, let's, let's move, can I, let's move on, yeah, let's move on and do something.
You know what I thought was funny is that all.
We're here at numerous concerns, yet the planning department just said.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
The county.
Yeah.
No, no, uh.
That's right.
Here, this is your problem.
Yeah.
Well, in all fairness, the county's two thirty-nine review is really the countywide impacts of something that's in a town.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, they're, they're not gonna be concerned about site-specific impacts. They're gonna be concerned about traffic, proposed uses and, and the big picture stuff.
And, and.
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 Cars going down the road.
Well, we're always. Yeah. April what meeting?
Twenty six.
April twenty-third.
Twenty-third, um, everybody, most of everybody's gonna be in, in, um.
Land.
Yeah.
From the.
So I think that, that meeting is gonna cancel. Do you want to move it to later in the week? Do you have one the week before? Have one the week after? Um, I think it depends on what's on our docket.
Yeah.
If we got a lot of stuff going on, I think we ought to maybe schedule one now, you know, it's canceled later. Schedule it the week after?
Okay, seven thirty.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
This one's the day.
Just later.
April.
April. Yeah. Delay in the week and then, you know, if, if nothing's cooking, we'll just say, okay, let's, let's just, let's just cancel it. But, you know, we may be in the midst of this still or something else may come that really needs our attention.
Also, next time that we talk about this, we'll really help and have the E P A guys.
I invited him to come today. He was going for a week, he couldn't make it. I've already asked him if he could come to the next meeting if we have.
I'm gonna try to contact the D E C to go and see if they would have Sunday represented.
New York.
Or.
Give consent to go.
Power, no power. You know, maybe, maybe the D E C can give us some insight on how they look at E P A removing lead and da, 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 so we can just.
Yeah, I mean, we have to do our.
Yes.
They have a second.
We actually.
Yes.
Here we go. We got a bill and date update.
All right.
No twenty pictures over it.